Please stand so he may salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Attendance?
Yeah.
We'll ask the clerk to take the attendance.
Counselor Vido, Counselor Abadana, Counselor Tiara, Counselor Rodriguez, Counselor Recupero, absent, Counselor Cortel, Counselor Murphy, absent, Counselor Lopez, Counselor Robinson, Counselor Frank, Counselor Garcia, absent. Eight members present, Mr. Chairman, here it comes.
Okay. First order of business.
Memorials and celebratory resolutions. We have a resolution introduced by Counselor Vido and Counselor Lopez. Whereas we are a community of low, middle, working-class families, and whereas in recent years, cost of living and rents have increased significantly in Chelsea, and whereas a full-time worker in Massachusetts, earning the minimum wage, still only earns $22,880 a year, and whereas many workers earning their minimum wage are forced to work three or more jobs to support their families, whereas our state's economy thrives when all working people are able to meet their basic needs, whereas employees paying adequate wages equates to more efficient work and better retention, making it easier to recruit, and whereas workers have more money in their pockets, allow them to support local businesses and create more jobs, whereas when the Massachusetts Minimum Wage Bill rose from $8 to $11 in June 2014, our state's economy added more than 150,000 jobs, and whereas eight other states from California are made, have eliminated the subminimum wage for tipped workers without seeing any harm to restaurants and a reduction in tipping, and whereas Massachusetts has the highest gap between tipped worker wage and minimum wage salaries in the entire nation, whereas the demographics of tipped workers, restaurant workers, hairdressers, car wash staff, airport, wheelchair parking attendants, valets, by and large, represent that our constituents of this very community, now therefore be it resolved that Chelsea City Council does hereby support legislation HB 2365 and has be a 1,004 to create a statewide $15 minimum wage for all workers in Massachusetts culminating in 2021. Do you motion?
Chair recognizes Counselor Vido.
It's an adopt-by-rule call vote, and I'd like to speak on it.
Sure. You have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you. So this resolution is supporting, there's been a momentum across the state about raising the minimum wage to $15 an hour, and why it's important for me to be able to support this, not only because we're working, our state senator and our state representative also have bills in the House and in the Senate pushing this initiative, but I think it's really important because the people that are affected by this, their demographics are very similar to the demographics that we represent here in the city. And so I thought it was very important. I think about a mother who works part-time, let's say, at IHOP, and she works mother's hours, eight to two, and she gets paid $2, $3 an hour, and is dependent solely on tips. She can work an entire shift, not have any customers, and she's walking away with $20 an hour. And in this day and age, particularly in this area where rent is so high, it's almost impossible to support a family on those wages. So I'm proud to propose this resolution and to have the support of my fellow counselors to stand in solidarity with our state legislature and support the $15 an hour minimum wage.
Yeah. That's good. Okay. One rule call. Rule call. Yeah, we took that from new business. It's a roll call vote.
Took it out of the, like.
Okay.
Okay. Clerk will call a roll. Oh, I got your papers.
Counselor Vido.
Yes.
Counselor Abadana.
Yes.
Counselor Tiara.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero, absent, Counselor Cortel.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, absent, Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Frank.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia, absent. In favor and unopposed, three absent, motion adopted.
Motion adopted.
Now we have a resolution.
Okay. Now we'll take up the resolution.
Celebratory resolutions, introduced by Counselor Vido and Counselor Lopez. Whereas Chelsea is an environmental justice community, and whereas Green Roots, formerly known as Greenspace, has had a longstanding commitment to improving quality of life through environmental justice efforts, and whereas on April 30th, 2017, thousands of people marched in Washington DC to protest the climate policies of our new administration, and whereas Green Roots in Chelsea, led by Roseanne Bon Jovani, Maria Bellinpower, organized a bus trip for Chelsea residents to participate in the People's Climate March, whereas local community leaders, young and old, sacrificed hours of travel and marched in 91-degree weather to demand action and protect on the environment, whereas Green Roots dedication to organize and build a membership reflective of the city has activated people in areas that previously were under addressed, and whereas local conservations have deepened and broadened to speak of environmental justice on a global scale and how it intersects in other social justice issues in marginalized communities like Chelsea. And whereas the momentum that Green Roots has gained locally through education, outreach, and advocacy is followed by putting boots to the ground and marching when necessary for environmental justice everywhere, now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council recognize Green Roots staff, youth, ECO crew members, leaders, and friends for its commitment to environmental sustainability and representing Chelsea during the People's Climate March in Washington DC.
Chair recognizes Counselor Vido.
Motion to accept and file under suspension. If there are no objections, I'd like to speak on it.
You want it adopted under suspension?
Adopted.
Under suspension. See him no objection, so moved. You have the floor, Counselor.
So this is a resolution acknowledging Green Roots for the amazing work that they do in the community with respect to environmental justice. They, I remember growing up, environmental justice was boring, tree huggers, that's what we used to call people, a bunch of geeks, and that's, you know, it wasn't cool. But I feel like Green Roots, with all the work that they've done in the community for so many years, they actually made talking about the environment popular, they made it cool. And they also, they also, for all the years that they've been working on it, they also find a way to intersect it with other issues, because it's not a coincidence that we have the environmental justice issues that we have in the city, and that we are a low-income community, and that we are majority, a community of color. Our kids have high rates of asthma, I mean, highest in the state, and, I mean, this is real. So I just want to shout out Roseanne Bon Jovani and Maria Bellinpower, who unfortunately are not here to accept this resolution, but they have some members of the ECO crew, and Adela, and one of their board members, that's here, John Valange, to accept the resolution on their behalf, to just acknowledge them. They organized a group to go down to Washington DC and protest the People's Climate March on April 30th? April 30th. And a bunch of people went, and they sacrificed no showers, they sacrificed time on the bus, they went all the way down there, they protested in 91-degree weather, and then they came back all for us, all representative of Chelsea, and that, that needs to be acknowledged, so thank you.
Counselor Lopez.
I had the opportunity to go with Green Roots, actually Henry Wilson went with us too. It was amazing to see how many people marched on that day, and I want to thank you, Green Roots, for the invitation for us and for the people. There actually were 28 people that represented the city of Chelsea. Thank you, Green Roots.
I am the assistant of the president to present the resolution to the ECO crew.
You can. No.
ECO crew. Any comments? [inaudible]
Tabalay.
Public speaking.
All right, we're back, we're back in session. The next order of business is public speaking. Anybody here to address the council? May take the podium over there, state your name and address for the record. We'll have a four-minute max. I'll put my hand up when you have one minute left.
Good evening. My name is Zaida Ismatul Oliva, and this is my mom, Beatriz Oliva. She lives on 335 Spruce Street, so I'm here to speak on her behalf and also speak on my behalf as a former resident, long-term former resident of 335 Spruce Street. I'm here to address the issue of two-hour parking that's being proposed for the area of Cary Square. That area has always been a residential area, it's never been a business area, and I think that it is important to keep residents in the forefront, and parking is already very difficult, as is, as a resident, that I have been there for many, many years, and I do find it that it's problematic that now we're trying to impose this two-hour parking for just one or two businesses in the area, when that area has always been predominantly residential. And I urge you to please vote no on the, on the two-hour parking. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy March. I'm actually a resident of Washington Avenue near Cary Square. I have come up today to counter the statements that were just made in favor of the two-hour limit because of the need for parking in that area, particularly Cary Square. It's obviously quite evident that whether you like it or not, Chelsea is gentrifying, and part of that is new businesses are coming in, and having family members and friends visit that area, not having a place to park, because people are parked in there for extended periods of time, is quite difficult to, to negotiate in terms of logistics and parking. So I actually would like for there to be some ban, be it meter parking or a two-hour limit for parking in that area, for businesses to thrive, for people who are looking to come to that area for economic reasons or otherwise, to be able to have that ability to, to do that. Thank you.
Can I get your address for the record? I didn't quite hear you.
I'm so sorry. 139 Washington Avenue.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Naomi Zabat. I live at 60 Dudley Street in Spencer Lofts. Can you hear me? Everybody?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? I am here to, tonight, to ask for the council to approve the Parking Commission's plan to have eight of the 33 spots that are available in Cary Square to be two hours during normal business hours. Cary Square is not just residential. There are, our residents is there, but from way back, I'm fourth-generation Chelsea resident, from way back, this has been a business area, and they're not asking for all of the spots to be two-hour or metered or anything. It's a quarter of the spots that are there. And if we want Chelsea to be a thriving, successful sort of city that we are becoming and that it once used to be many, many years ago, this is really necessary, and I hope that the council takes into consideration that no, that half of the businesses, half of the buildings there are one-story buildings. They're not residential. That's half of them, and we're asking for a quarter of the parking spots. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Jeanette Velas, 1 Franklin Ave, and like this lady just mentioned, it's only six spots. That was said to me right next to my house, by the city. It's only six spots. If you're not living there, yes, make the decision to take parking away. I'm concerned, even though I'm up the street, that this is going to affect me. It's going to trickle up. Those residents, especially one in mine, who was too scared to come, who works overnight, comes in the morning to park, now has to set an alarm, she said, because if the only spot she finds is that two-hour one, you know, or she's going to go look for parking up Forside. Carter Heights has 108 units from one to four bedrooms. They offer one parking spot, and I witnessed a lot of those residents park on the hill, all the way up Forside, Franklin. So by having this on Washington Ave, I don't see how it's going to fix the problem. Yes, there's, I've been in that property for 18 years, there's always been businesses there, but this is the first time in my 18 years of living in that area that parking is being brought up. And there's times I drive there, 10, 11, there's parking. There's parking right in front of Tempo Emanuel. If the residents could move and park up the street, why can't the customers park right in front of the church to walk in? You know? Parking in the city itself is very frustrating, you know? And it's not that we're not trying to support small businesses, there's tons of small businesses in the area. So it's not about not trying to support, but if we're going to say only six spots, guess what? It was already taken, taken from me, and I also pay my taxes. So that's all I wanted to say. I'm against it.
Thank you.
Bruce Black, 175 Cottage Street. I'm here to support Off-Broadway's objection to Item 3 on the parking. When the coffee shop went in front of zoning and planning, the findings were, and I quote, "The proposed coffee shop will not impact the neighborhood any more than the current coffee shop. The board finds that the proposal will not increase off-street parking demand, and the board finds that any impact associated with the coffee shop has been absorbed by the neighborhood over the past 20 years." As you all know, parking in Cary Square is probably easier than any other business district around, certainly easier than Prattville, certainly easier than the Webster Ave and Broadway, and of course, easier than anything on Broadway from this building all the way to the courthouse. Nevertheless, a mere 11 days after the grand opening of the coffee shop, they requested to put in parking meters or one-hour parking all through Cary Square, up to 300 feet away from the shop. It took just 11 days to change the entire neighborhood. This affects residents and businesses, not just on Washington, but indirectly on Silk, Forside, Gardner, Cary, Tugger, Bloomingdale. The proposal back in December was a huge overreach. Rather than reasonably request one or two 15-minute spots in the morning, he requested to change the entire neighborhood for his own benefit. Many, including a few counselors, expressed concern over this proposal in February at the Traffic and Parking hearing. Ultimately, they compromised, the traffic and parking compromised on two-hour spots, essentially from Tadash's up to the coffee shop, including in front of Off-Broadway Dance Studio, to being forced until 6:00 PM, six days a week. Off-Broadway has been around for over 15 years, provides a great service for the community. They testified at the February hearing, and in front of you folks a few weeks ago, how detrimental this would be to their business, since their instructors and parents would have to continually leave to move their cars or park off of Washington Ave onto one of those other neighboring streets. Not only would this be disruptive to their classes, it's a potential safety issue with parents and children walking further after dark. There are a couple of troubling aspects about this entire situation. Prior to opening, as I said, the city determined that the parking has been fine there, supported by 20 years of no issues from the neighborhood, including the previous coffee shop owner. Yet 11 days after the grand opening, there was an attempt to, if you will, reimagine, reimagine Cary Square, without any basis in fact of history, any support from the neighborhood, and without concern for the effect on the neighbors. When, when they did not rubber stamp the request in February, the owner sent an email to the chief of police requesting that license plates be scanned in Cary Square multiple times a day. Now, I don't know of any other business that could send that email to the chief of police to utilize equipment that's normally used for criminals.
30 seconds.
The way that this was. The city shouldn't be in business of choosing winners and losers, especially when a shop 's been around for over 15 years. You should vote to reject this two-hour proposal.
Good evening. My name's Iris Duncan. I live at 284 Washington Ave in Chelsea. I work with Three Hills Real Estate Service. We manage about 56 units across four buildings on Cary, on Cary Square, and I'm just asking that we consider the residents. You know, they already call me pretty much weekly, talking about, you know, having issues parking. In particular, we have a 20-spot garage, actually, in one of our buildings, and they're constantly fighting over who gets the next one when it becomes available, simply for the fact of, of parking. We have residents who work the non-traditional, or they don't work, you know, between nine and five, the typical working hour, so they work in the evenings or they work at nights, and so during the day to have to move, it's already kind of an issue for them. So I just ask that you consider the repercussions. I'm all for small businesses, but I also have to care about the 56 households that don't just have one vehicle, they might have more, obviously, with the parking issues as, as it is. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, the polls.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Dan Morales. I'm at 170 Washington Ave. I'm the new owner of the Blue Frog Restaurant and Sports Bar there, at Cary Square. I'm in favor of the parking limitations, as are the other business owners in the local area. I have personally witnessed over the last four months that people come and park in that area, take the bus, disappear for eight hours or nine hours, and that limits the amount of business and traffic that we are able to generate, people that can't park in the, in the vicinity. So I'm, I'm asking that you vote in favor of the two-hour limitation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. Aaron Garcia from 190 Webster here. In the short 17 years that I've lived and been in Chelsea, I've seen a great change in it, and that's, that's due to a lot of businesses that have been popping up, and I, it just, these businesses have a positive change on the city. And I've been lucky enough to get a job at one of the local businesses on Cary Ave, and time and time again, I see people come in and they say, you know, "I would have loved to come in like a few days ago or something, but parking's really difficult." And, and that's because there's no limit to parking here. And then, actually, as a matter of fact, my mom did that. She would leave her car there and go and take the 111, leave for hours on end. Now, this is affecting the businesses, and I, I just hate seeing that, and because I am part of that, I feel affected by that, and also, because I'm 17, I am, I don't, you know, the future of this city, and it's great that we wouldn't have to go and get another job somewhere else in another city. I love the fact that I'm able to work in Chelsea. I have friends who go all the way to Everett or Boston or something for a job, and it's great that, you know, we can stay local. Now, having this two-hour parking is going to support teen, jobs for teens, and I, you know, it's, it's just something that, even though it may seem small, it's just going to, it's a butterfly effect, just going to keep going. So I, I'm in favor of the two-hour parking, not only because, you know, I'm, I have a job in Cary Square, but I feel like it's just going to greatly affect over time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Karen Michel, 179 Washington Ave, Chelsea, owner of Off-Broadway Dance Studio. I've had my business for 15 years. Like I said in the past, when I was up here for the meeting a couple of weeks ago, I knew moving their parking would be an issue, but my parents find spots to bring their children to dance. I cannot have a parent who is here now, who has twins, and she comes to the dance studio for her daughter. Her daughter's there for three hours to lug her twins out and come back in to play puzzle parking. All right, so let's move our car, and we'll just puzzle park, so we don't get a ticket. That cannot happen. I cannot have my staff leave children in the classroom to go move their cars. That, it's not fair. I am providing a service for the children in the city of Chelsea. I am the only dance studio here. I danced for Joyce Attorelli, and her dance studio was across the street from where mine is located. I used to go to dance. My dad or my mom would take me to spa to spa. We never had an issue with parking. We'd all go there for ice cream after. There was not an issue, there never has been an issue. What I would like to know, if there's ever been a petition before, and why hasn't the Parking Commission brought this up? Or the council bring it up before? So I don't know if there has ever been anybody that had brought it up before. And as Roy being on council, he should have had somebody else do this for him. It's, it's in my opinion, and many of us feel the same way, that is, it's unethical for him to petition official boards for his own benefit. So I am leaving here tonight. I spoke here the other last meeting, and my parents are all upset. It's going to hurt my business because they can't stay there with their children. They're not old enough to be dropped off. I have babies, three-year-olds, on Wednesdays. I go to dance, I go there in the morning to do work, wide-open parking, no one is parking and getting on the bus there. Up the other end of Washington Ave, yes, there is, but not in Cary Square, it's not happening. I've had parents walk around on Saturday mornings. I'm there Saturday morning, I'm wide-open parking. I don't have my parents parking at the corner, where I'm not supposed to park, but people are parking to go into a business there and drop off stuff from another spot to bring into the business. I park there for a second to run in a box into my studio, I'm called out on it. Or a parent is bringing Girl's Go cookies that her daughter had sold to parents at the dance studio, I get called up, called out on that. She was selling Girl's Go cookies for her daughter. But my thing is, please reject Item 3, because my parents, it's going to hurt my business. I have children that have danced with me since they were three, and now they're teaching, and my teachers cannot leave, and I'm there four to five, six hours a day. Saturday, I'm there for six hours. I'm not, I can't run out, I'm running a business. I can't keep moving my car. So I ask that everyone takes into consideration and reject Item 3, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gianna DiMarzo. I'm 15 years old, and I'm here with Off-Broadway Dance Studio. As of September, I've been dancing there for 13, 14 years, and there has never been a problem. I'm now a staff member there, and me leaving little four-year-olds like Gianna in the back, in the middle of class, so my mom can go out and fix parking, or Brianna, or Karen, or someone, it's ridiculous, there's no reason for it. If there's one business that has an issue with it, he needs to go, but no one else has an issue with it, so it shouldn't be considered. Thank you.
Can I get your address, please?
What? I'm sorry?
Can I get your address for the record?
70 Lafayette.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Mark Rossi. I'm a resident of Chelsea. I live at 55 Clark Avenue in Chelsea, Mass. I'm, even as I speak, I'm, as a resident, I'm a little torn on this issue. First and foremost, it's, selfishly, as a side note, maybe selfishly, it's exciting that so many people turned out. I think that's fantastic, and it's a great democratic process. As a resident, I am in favor of supporting the small businesses in the area in which I live. At the same time, I'm also mindful of the, the parking issue, because when I've gone to businesses over there, whether it be Wings, formerly Wings, now closed, or Panic Cafe, there have been at least five or six times that I will drive, look for parking space, and keep driving, because there is no parking. That is part of the problem, as I see it, in a mixed-use zone, which is what we're talking about. We have residential, residential and commercial use of this space. I think it's also a question of growing pains, frankly. We're trying to develop certain aspects of Chelsea, we're trying to improve, I think, the community, give access to a really nice place to go have a cup of coffee, or, or hang out at a sports bar, or get a haircut. I drive by that intersection at least three or four times So I ask that everyone takes in consideration and reject item three, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gianna DiMarzo. I'm fifteen years old, and I'm here with Off Broadway Dance Studio. As of September, I've been dancing there for thirteen, fourteen years, and there has never been a problem. I'm now a staff member there, and me leaving little four-year-olds like Gianna in the back, in the middle of class, so my mom can go out and fix parking, or Brianna, or Karen, or someone, it's ridiculous, there's no reason for it. If there's one business that has an issue with it, he needs to go, but no one else has an issue with it, so it shouldn't be considered. Thank you.
Can I get your address, please?
What, I'm sorry?
Can I get your address for the record?
Seventy Lafayette.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Rossi. I'm a resident of Chelsea. I live at 55 Clark Avenue in Chelsea, Mass. Even as I speak, I'm, as a resident, I'm a little torn on this issue. First and foremost, selfishly, as a side note, maybe selfishly, it's exciting that so many people turned out. I think that's fantastic, and it's a great democratic process. As a resident, I am in favor of supporting the small businesses in the area in which I live. At the same time, I'm also mindful of the parking issue, because when I've gone to businesses over there, whether it be Wings, formerly Wings, now closed, or Panic Cafe, there have been at least five or six times that I will drive, look for parking space, and keep driving, because there is no parking. That is part of the problem, as I see it, in a mixed-use zone, which is what we're talking about. We have residential and commercial use of this space. I think it's also a question of growing pains, frankly. We're trying to develop certain aspects of Chelsea. We're trying to improve, I think, the community, give access to a really nice place to go have a cup of coffee, or hang out at a sports bar, or get a haircut. I drive by that intersection at least three or four times a day, and there are always cars double-parked, triple-parked. So parking is an issue, whether you're pro-resident or pro-business. And it's unfortunate that it's this situation where one seems to be at odds with the other. As a resident, selfishly, I guess, I would love to have the ability to be able to park in front of the coffee shop, so I can run in, grab a cup of joe, and head off to the office. Listening to the testimony that's, of the folks that have gone before me, and at the last meeting, you know, it's hard to balance between the two. The dance studio, I can understand what you're saying, but at the same time, you're tying up parking spaces for potential customers for the other businesses. Nothing against your business at all. As far as the residents go, I understand completely where they're coming from. Again, parking's a problem. If I had to vote, and trying to balance between the two, I would try to take into account the fact that this is a temporary measure, as I understand it. It's sort of a trial, to see whether it works, how it works, or not. And under the circumstances, frankly, I think it should have been presented with an additional bit of rezoning in terms of other parking.
One minute.
All right, so anyways, I'm gonna wrap it up. I think we should support our small businesses. The last coffee shop that was there, regardless of whether Roy owns it or not, and whether it's ethical or unethical, it's a business, and I think that it needs to be supported, along with the other businesses in the area, including the dance studio. It's unfortunate that there is no other provision in terms of, you know, other parking made available to residents. I think, on balance, I would probably weigh in favor of granting the two-hour parking spaces. So, for what that's worth, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Albano. I live at 42 Willard Street, right up the hill from Cary Square. I moved to Chelsea in 1995, and I have lived here since, and all for more than twenty-two years. I have been as civically involved as I possibly can. I was a member of Green Space. I helped fight the salt pile. I was a member of the Board of Directors of the Chelsea Collaborative, a member of the Chelsea Planning Board, its chair for much of that time. I support the Apollinar Theater. I'm actually holding a fundraising event at my house again this year for the theater. I hope you'll all come to that. It's on June 16th, at my home. During the more than two years, I'm sorry, the two decades that I have lived in Chelsea, Chelsea has made an incredible amount of progress from the days of receivership right before that. But I've been watching and waiting, like a lot of people here, for Cary Square to realize its full potential as one of the city's principal commercial areas. And it just doesn't seem to be able to more fully launch and sustainably flourish as a meaningful retail and commercial center for Chelsea residents. Businesses seem to come and go in the neighborhood. I was, for instance, sad to see that one of the bright spots, the Chelsea City Cafe, go out of business. And when the new coffee shop opened, I saw that as a real sign of progress and possible revitalization. So it's happy to come down here tonight in support of this parking that's to be set aside for some number of hours per day for the businesses in that neighborhood. It seems to me that the Parking Commission got this right the first time. And I know you heard from Bruce Black, but I also want to mention that he and councillor Paul Murphy, who are both members of the Cary Square Club, wrote to the Parking Commission that they, quote, "opposed meters or two-hour parking in front of their club," that they were fine with having it on the other side, in front of 173 to 181 Washington Avenue. And while certain members of the Cary Square Club say that there is no parking problem in Cary Square, the Parking Commission, actually in connection with this, did a study and found that fifty percent of the spaces were taken by cars that were parked for eight-plus hours, something that is not conducive to a business district. And they failed to mention that the members of the club also have the use of a private lot across the street. So also, we heard from the tenant from the dance studio, I want to point out that their landlord actually supports this. So it's not about one business owner in the neighborhood, it's about what's right for all of the business owners in the neighborhood. The city council voted to officially zone Cary Square and Prattville, Washington Square as business zones. Cary Square does not provide short-term parking for the benefit of businesses to encourage shopping or patronage. Half of the buildings in this square are one-story retail, and the Parking Commission has voted to implement two-hour, non-metered parking for eight of the thirty-six parking spots in Cary Square. Only eight of thirty-six, thirty-three percent of all the spots in a neighborhood that is fifty percent non-residential. Every other commercial area in the city has some number of parking spaces designated this way.
Thirty seconds.
This is, I think, very important, that we help make Cary Square flourish. It's good for local business, it provides jobs, it provides taxes to the city of Chelsea. And I, for one, would really like to make Cary Square become a kind of place people want to go and hang out, and make it vibrant, and be part of what's happening in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Tony Hernandez, Three County Road. I'm here in support of this bill. I feel for the neighbors around, but I think you can fix this. And this is, hear this, I get up every morning, around five o'clock in the morning, around County Road and all along Washington Street, there's people coming from other towns and parking there to take the bus. And if you move the time from five to eight o'clock in the morning, you're gonna create a lot of more parking space for other people on there. So I'm here to ask you to support this bill, please. Thank you.
Hey, folks. I'm happy to see so many people here tonight. My name's John Valensch. I'm a lifelong resident of Chelsea. I live at 13 Cheever Street in Prattville. You know, just going off of what Mark said, you know, I don't think it's negligible that the councillor supporting the resolution, you know, has supported this resolution for his own benefit, organizing a rally in support of it. I think it's incredibly problematic and indicative of the way in which policy and politics is conducted in this city occasionally. And I think that this whole process needs to be reevaluated. I also think it's kind of interesting that, you know, both folks inside this room tonight, the residents, and those who weren't able to be with us, are largely against this resolution. And yet, a large portion of the folks speaking in favor don't live in the district. And so I think there's something to say about that, that the residents who actually live there don't want this. You know, and I think while we need to consider the balance between advocating for business and residence, I think it's actually already foregone. I think the neighborhood has been relatively successful for years. The addition of the cafe is welcome, that's very clear. But I don't think that it should be at the expense of the residents, who very clearly don't want this measure to move forward. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Kevin Sabre. I'm a small business owner here in town. I'm gonna give you the small business perspective on that.
Address, please.
Sorry. 305 Commodores Way.
Thank you.
As a small businessman, I prefer that the money my business spends stay in the community. To circulate and recirculate is a Korean sort of local economy. Never, ever should it be lost from the local economy. Never, ever should it be lost forever, in the fraction of a second that it takes to swipe your card, sending the money on a one-way journey out of town, out of state, and all too often out of the country. I would prefer to buy paint at Kirsten Paint Warehouse on Park Street instead of Home Depot at Parkway Plaza, Kate's Bagels instead of Dunkin's, and Pan Cafe instead of Panera's. The biggest thing stopping me from doing so is the uncertainty, the luck of the draw, and the just plain unacceptable risk of having to endure what we all know as parking purgatory. Nobody enjoys circling the block, searching for a space that may never appear. As much as I want to shop locally, mine, like other small businesses, cannot afford to send two people, one to drive and circle the block, while the other goes inside, to do a one-person job. The lack of parking is why the opportunity to send our money rocketing and pinballing through the local economy is all too often lost forever. Without parking, history has shown the local businesses are less likely to succeed, thrive, and stabilize their neighborhoods. When I stopped the Pan Cafe at 5:30 this evening, the people inside were children doing homework. So these places are much more than just coffee shops. A coffee shop is an important thread in the fabric of the community. Anything that you can do to support parking, even one space at a time, increases the likelihood that more of the money spent locally remains in the local economy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, excuse me. Hi, my name is Kelly Garcia, and I live on 135 Washington Ave. I am twenty-three years old, and I've lived in the same home for all my life. And it is the first time I am able to, as a student, well, I just graduated Saturday with my master's, and as a teacher, I get to finally go down the street and enjoy un cafecito con alfajores, something Latino, something that is, I can call home. And that is what Panic Cafe feels like to me, as opposed to going to Starbucks and having to drive all the way across town to enjoy a cup of coffee. And so I am in support of this proposal, if I may say. And if I may add an idea, maybe a compromise. I know that I attend class in Boston, and something that I find so convenient is the Park Boston app, where you get to pay the meter on your phone. And I think that, again, I don't know how, or I don't know how that could possibly be introduced here in Chelsea, but I think that would be a great addition if, like, people, like, parents who are dropping off their children, or staff who are working, can just pay the meter via phone. And so once again, I am, and as the previous speaker said, students are doing homework. I do my homework there. I lesson plan there, and I truly enjoy that I get to watch my city thrive. And I also noticed that people, not everyone, right? Some people park their cars in front of my home, I live, again, right on Washington Ave. They take the 111 and don't come back until midnight or 1:00 a.m. And that same car is parked all day. And again, I don't think that is conducive for community businesses. And so I'll leave it at that. I am in support of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is April Schwartz. I live on, at 30 Beacon Street, so the other side of town, where the parking is probably even worse. And I know that I have tried to go to this cafe instead of Starbucks, so I drive away from Starbucks, because I want to keep my money in Chelsea. And I'm trying very hard to keep this money, the small businesses here. And I've driven over there and not been able to find parking. And then I'm driving back to Starbucks, because they have a giant parking lot. But I think that what they're asking for is very minimal, and I think that it will potentially make it even better for the dance studio, because if they found that people are parking there all day and taking the 111, they're taking spaces away from all of us. Anybody who wants to be there, who lives there, businesses that are there, we can't, Chelsea is changing, and it's growing. And the only way we're gonna do this successfully is with small businesses. We need food trucks, we need new restaurants, we need new stores, we need people to come in and do things here, so that we can all spend our money here, instead of going to Somerville or Boston. And if we're letting people at Somerville and Boston, or people come here, park and take our nice 111 bus over, how is that good for any of us? Block some spots so that people to go, like, do I want to risk playing parking roulette to get the 111 bus, or am I gonna park somewhere else? A community this close to the city, where parking is so easy, they get to avoid the tolls, the everything, they can just park here and go on the bus? We're too close to the city for us to not have two-hour parking everywhere. Downtown should be two-hour parking. They still take nickels, I think, downtown. It's crazy. We should be charging more money, because people are just gonna park here and go away for eight hours, nine hours. It doesn't cost anything. You know, what are their other options? And I just, you know, I think that anything that we, everything we do moving forward, we have to consider supporting the businesses, because it'll make all of our personal lives better. I used to live on Addison Street for five years, which is closer to Cary Square. I had never been to Cary Square until Panic Cafe opened. And that, to me, I'm kind of sad. It's a cute square. I'm super excited to see there's a new sports bar coming in. You know, businesses don't survive if people can't go there. So anyways, that's all I've got. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Nicole DiMarzo. I live at 70 Lafayette. I'm here to oppose putting any type of time limit or meters in front of the cafe or the dance studio. My daughter actually spoke also. She has been going to the dance studio for the past thirteen years. I take the 111 bus. I walk from Lafayette down to Cary Square every morning at 7:00 a.m., and there is absolutely not a car in sight. My whole thing is, is you do put these time limits on, all these parents that have children that are dropping off at, like, three in the afternoon, if you have a two-hour time limit, it's not gonna stop somebody who's just parked there. You're gonna have double parking. Children run across the street because they're trying to get into class on time. You're gonna have more traffic. There's nowhere for them to even pull over in order to do, to drop off. I know for a fact that I've circled the block trying to drop my daughter off, or pick my daughter up from dancing. And ninety-five percent of the people that are there aren't even the dance studio. It's other people. So you, everybody keeps bringing up the fact that people are parking there for, to take the 111. You don't have control over that, we don't have control over that, the cafe doesn't have control over that. No business has, no business in that area has control over who's parking and taking the bus into Boston. But a two-hour limit is, I don't think a two-hour limit or the meters are gonna help that. It's a whole city-wide process. Katz Bagels, you go to buy Katz Bagels, you can't get parking. Yes, you need two people, one to drive around the block and one to run in. And they've been here how long? Thirty years, forty years? It's not gonna be conducive to that area. There is plenty of parking. After 5:00 p.m., when the studio is closed, there's plenty of parking. There's two cars there normally for the, that are there longer than two, three hours, and that would be both the owners. Most of the dance teachers are there maybe three hours, and some of them don't even drive. They carpool. I know I've parked into Disco's parking lot, because I can't find parking, which is taking up from them. I just don't think putting any type of meter, because I know a lot of people aren't gonna want to pay the meter to stop and pay twenty-five cents to run in to grab a cup of coffee. I am completely opposed to this, and I really hope you weigh the pros and cons to it, because it's not gonna, I honestly don't think it's gonna help either the dance studio, or any of the restaurants, or even the sports bar. The sports bar that's coming in there, you're gonna have a two-hour limit, so somebody who's going in to eat dinner, all of a sudden now you have two hours to shovel food down your throat, and then you have to leave? I mean, I just, I don't think it's gonna be feasible for anybody, but those are my two cents.
Thank you.
My name is Jill Davis. I have lived, I'm thirty-seven years old. I have lived in Chelsea my entire life.
What's your address, please?
113 Beacon Street. Even just a few years ago, I remember down on Beacon Street, they lifted the parking permit for, I think, almost two years, and Chelsea's just crowded. It didn't make a difference. Now, over there, I have two kids. I'm at the dance studio three days a week, and all of that's gonna cause me is wondering if I'm gonna get a ticket. Sometimes I do have to drive around the block once, but I always manage to find parking. I also have a three-year-old that's gonna be there next year. She's old enough for me to just drop her off. I don't want to have to have the teachers leave her there. Like I said, it's just, I don't think it's gonna make much of a difference as far as parking, except divert it to different streets. So I'm against it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council. I didn't plan on speaking last, this evening. The last time I spoke, I think I said everything I could. But I remember as a, when I was the president of the council, or when I was a member of the council, one thing I had a habit of, and sometimes it got me in trouble, but if I heard someone make a misstatement, or I say something that I thought was wrong, I would get up and say something about it, or I would send them a letter the next week if it was public speaking, according to our rules. The speaker from 42 Willard Street said that the Cary Square Club had a petition against meters, which is true, but he also said that when the two-hour parking signs were proposed, that we were in favor. That is false. It never happened, won't happen, and were opposed to it. When I sat at the three parking commission meetings that I went to, I heard that there was a study that there were cars that were parked there. I never heard the number 50%, but there were a number of cars that were there four hours. The speaker from Willard Street said eight hours. I think it's four. That's what I heard. I could be wrong, but I don't think so. What bothers me, and you really think about this, what makes Cary Square so magical? You would think that people are coming from Revere, Sargus, Everett, East Boston, to park in Cary Square to get on the 111 bus. You know, I used to drive the 111 bus when I was a younger man with DACA here. And I'll tell you, you start up in Prattville, and you're on Woodlawn Ave, and you're on Springville, near Springville Ave, and the bus goes down Garfield, and Sagamore, and parts of Washington Ave, before it even hits Cary Square. People, you think people don't park there? And if you put up two-hour parking in that area, are those people who take the 111 bus and park there, which I don't see a lot, and I'm there a lot more than most people in Cary Square, but I don't see it a lot, you think those people are going to just magically disappear? So if they're used to parking in front of Tedeschi's, or they're used to parking in front of the upcoming sports bar or across the street, what's going to happen? The poor lady at One Franklin Ave is going to have much more trouble finding a spot, because they're going to find their way up there. The people who are able to park near the synagogue, across the street from the funeral home, are going to have those spots taken. Our members, who I told you, mostly a lot of elderly people, are going to have trouble getting close to the club. And yes, sometimes we are allowed to use Anthony's Funeral Home, because Peter Zucheski, the owner, is a member of the Cary Square Club. I'm a member of the Cary Square Club. Two ex-fire chiefs. I could go on and on. But you know, there's been a coffee shop there since I was a little kid, and I've been, I've lived in this city for seven decades, seven decades. Been here my whole life, except for two years, which I served in the military.
One minute.
So there's always been small businesses there. There's never been a need for this. So I reiterate that we are opposed to it. But you know, you talk about a small business coming in. The dance studio's a small business. We're not a business art club, we're a social organization, but I told you how many things we do for this city. We've been there 69 years. Doesn't, doesn't that mean anything? She's been there, in this city 15 years. Doesn't that mean anything? I hope you all will reject number three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Juan Ortega, and I'm from 373 Crescent Avenue. I'm new to the area. Been here two years, originally from Texas. There's no parking issues in Texas, as you might know. It's very big. But I, I very quickly found out what the problem was when it comes to small businesses here in Chelsea and its parking. I had a few tickets myself. We do, what I do is, we harvest avocado in Mexico. It takes a lot to bring it all the way here to New England and sell to the, 95% of my customers are small businesses, including all the little stores in the area, here, restaurants. I support 150% small business. I see, I see more and more small businesses coming up here in the area. It's a, it's a positive impact to the community. I personally didn't know much of Cary Square until I started visiting Panca Cafe, which I swapped for Starbucks as well, and many other places where I would stop and get my coffee. And I feel that we all can be fair and work together. If a percentage of, logic tells me that if a percentage of those parking spaces are only being asked for small business, I think that's fair, myself. Again, people are divided, yes and no, but I'm basically here to say that, you know, support local businesses. That is what makes the city grow as well. Just work together. I'm for it.
Thank you.
Hi, I, my name is Marissa Santiago. I live at 25 Hooper Street. I'm here to thank the city council, all of you, for your support in passing the resolution tonight in favor of raising the minimum wage. I know that there's a lot of people that are pretty familiar with this bill in the State House right now, but there's a lot of folks who are not here tonight that might be viewing from home, or other people that need some more information. But I really wanted to, to take a couple minutes to share a couple of stories from members who are tipped workers in the restaurant industry. I've shared before that I work for an organization called Rock United, and that's the Restaurant, Restaurant Opportunities Center. And we're a member of the Raise Up Coalition. We're a member of the Raise Up Coalition, and I wanted to acknowledge their work in making this also possible. We have a bill in the House right now, and a bill in the Senate. Both State Representative Deion Ryan and Senator Sal DiDomenico have, have co-sponsored these bills. And so on July 18th, there will be a hearing at the State House for those that need more information. But this is a huge issue. We have, we have a long history of wage theft in the city of Chelsea. There's still a huge gap when we talk about equality for women in the workplace. Something new that I've learned is the restaurant industry is often the first real job for our young people. And so as a mother of two young daughters, it, it brings up the fact that if we don't start working on equality and wage equality and closing that gap, sexual harassment and discrimination, exploitation of people will still continue to be a problem. And so in order for us to really shift, shift this, this in the future, we need to start somewhere. And so although a resolution is a declaration, it's a huge message, and it's a positive one, and I just wanted to commend you all for, you know, coming together collectively and supporting the residents of the city. And for the members and folks that have worked hard, that are part of this coalition as well, we wanted to say thank you. And we hope that we can continue to count on everyone's support as these bills move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will ask, is there any other speakers for public speaking? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting.
We have approval of the minutes and special meeting minutes, May 8th.
Counselor Lopez moves to adopt under suspension. If there are no objections, seeing none, so moved.
Communications. Copy of communication from the city manager, fire department overtime update. Dear councils, I have attached reinformation review to reply of Fire Chief Lynn Albanese to your request for an update on fire department overtime expenses for FY 2017. As you see the chief's memorandum, he does expect to need approximately $63,000 in additional funds to cover his remaining overtime expenses for FY 17. Within the next few weeks, I will be preparing required financial audits to cover deficits and certain appropriation accounts to close out FY 2017. This fire department overtime deficit and the other deficits mentioned by Chief Albanese will be included in these financial requests.
Counselor DeHara moves to accept and file communications under suspension. Seeing no objections, so moved.
Appointments to boards and commissions pursuant to your, to section 4-2 of the charter of the city of Chelsea, and running a recommended following individuals to boards and commissions of the city. For appointment to advisory board for community schools, Mr. Kevin Sandoval, to fill the unexpired term of Ms. Sarah Amen, ending on March 6, 2019. For appointment to the board of registrar voters, Mr. Fay Ducaran, Chelsea, to fill unexpired term of Frank Kowalski, February 28, 2018.
Chair recognizes Counselor Cortell. Second reading, so moved. Next order of business.
Appointments to the youth commission. I have committed previously to the city council that I would reestablish the Chelsea Youth Commission. On December 5, 2016, I promulgated a new Part II, Section 16 of the Administrative Code authorizing an updated version of this commission. Subsequent to that, action, a small group of volunteers under the direction of the new HHS Division of Recreation and Culture, will fear solicited application for this commission, conducted interviews, and now has recommended nominations. A list of the recommended members, all of whom I approve, is attached. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. All our young Chelsea adults between the ages 13 and 20, appointments for one-year terms, city manager.
Chair recognizes Counsel Vidal.
I move to accept a, accept a follow communication.
Move it to second. Move it to a second reading.
Oh, yeah.
Under suspension, seeing no objections, so moved.
Sidewalk padding, parking of motorized scooters and mopeds. Dear councils, I am running in response to your counsel order requesting enforcement of a no sidewalk parking rule for motorized scooters and mopeds. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of clarity on the issue of whether sidewalk parking of motorized scooters and mopeds is illegal in the city of Chelsea. City's traffic and parking regulations, which do include a prohibition against sidewalk parking, typically apply to motor vehicles and motorcycles with license plates issued by the registry of motor vehicles. These scooter mopeds are not issued such license plates. And although one might broadly interpret the definition of vehicle in the existing traffic and parking regulations to extend to these motorized scooter mopeds, it is not how those regulations have been historically interpreted by either the Chelsea Police Department or Chelsea Parking Control. In addition to the city's traffic and parking regulations, the city does have a general ordinance provision, Section 24-7, which prevents placing any item on a public way that interferes with convenient use of the way for public travel. This provision can be utilized by enforcement against the sidewalk parking of motorized scooters and mopeds, provided they are interfering with the travel of the public. But in most cases, where these scooter mopeds are attached to poles, there is adequate room for passage of the public, so the police can really invoke this ordinance provision. And lighter than above, my recommendation is that if this is truly a concern for the city council, it should adopt a new ordinance provision, which expressly prohibits the sidewalk parking of motorized scooters and mopeds. The appropriate location would probably be within ordinance Section 6-153, which already addresses other concerns about motorized scooters. A copy of that ordinance.
No, this is the first, this is the first reading. Can move it to conference, actually, if we have to look at an ordinance. When it comes up, accept and file. It'll be coming up on the new business.
Communications and petitions to the council. We have a copy of a communication received from Louis T. Adnizia, with a request of temporary signature stating two-hour parking in the Cary Square District, as opposed to the addition.
Chair recognizes Counsel.
Can I make a request that we send him a response, saying we got it?
Yes.
Let me see.
If the clerk can tell us if he's for or against the matter.
He was opposed to two-hour limitations.
He's opposed. There are also some emails that came in. I'll ask the clerk to read those, so it'll be recorded in the record.
We received an email from Edison, Edson Combra. No address, Four Eldridge Place, and he was in, in favor. Juan Gonzalez, he was opposed. From Sergio Giamello, Chamber Commerce, he was in favor. Trailway, Chamber Commerce.
Chamber Commerce, Broadway.
Trailway, Broadway, yeah.
Yep.
And we have Jerry Snerson. It just says.
Chelsea businessman from Broadway, actually.
He was in favor. And then we have Maurice Traveras, and he was opposed. I don't have an address here. Do you see an address?
No.
Do you have it? We have a communication from Clarion Jones Kovas, 258 Washington Ave, and they were in favor. Andreas Berszansky's in favor, from Tudor Street, 84 Tudor Street. Albert Calvo, Honor Stop and Compare Supermarket was in favor. Marvin Posada, 59 Williams Street, was in favor. And Tony Si, we had a confusion on this one. Some say it was, he was in favor, and some say he's opposed, so you'd have to read it yourself on this one. And we, the last one was from Linda Stephanowitz, 21 Three Month Street was in favor. Those were the communications, late and, and on time. That was under communications. Accept and file. I need a, I need a motion, Leo. Accept and file the communications, anybody?
Want to make a move? Accept, or you want to accept and file communications, and you want to roll call on the?
I don't have it up yet.
You don't have it up?
No.
Want to take it out of order?
No, I'm going to take it next.
Oh, okay, okay. That's, that's next. Wait till it comes up, so.
Okay, give me that. Under unfinished business, we have the item before you. It was laid on the table by Counselor Damali Vidal, and it's agenda item number three, to post temporary signature stating two-hour parking on the even side of Washington Avenue from 170 to 178, and on the odd side from 173 to 181, for enforcement Monday through Saturday, from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. until 27, August 2017, for further study based on a request submitted by Roy Avanata of Pam C. Cafe.
Chair recognizes Counsel Rodriguez. You want to, you want to roll call the measure?
Yeah.
Roll call to adopt?
Yeah.
Okay. You want a roll call to adopt? I'm going to ask the clerk to clarify the vote.
If you vote yes, you will adopt the two-hour parking. If you vote no, you deny it.
Okay, we clear, councilors?
Can we appoint a information court? Do you need the majority of the people here, or a certain number?
No, just the majority. Just the majority who's here. You have the floor, counselor.
First of all, I just want to thank everyone coming in. A lot of you came for this issue and topic. This is my district, so I hear a lot of the good things, the bad things, and then, in the beginning, I wasn't a fence on it, but I see that, that it came in a bad time when they did this study, especially with the Clark Ave School going around, because people from my street are parked, from Clark, are parking on Cary, people from Cary are parking on Washington, and it's just a domino effect. So this is, I don't see right now this as being a solution, because it's just pushing the parking issue somewhere else. And it only affects certain amounts. And it only affects certain amount of businesses there, because I know, say, at the restaurant, sounds like a great idea, the Blue Frog, most people, like, I believe someone said it, eat for over two hours, so you know, you're going to spend more time than two hours there. And I walk into the local businesses there, such as like Santiago's, Kelsey's, where they're not in favor of it, they're not here today to speak, but they're not in favor of it, as well as the salon there. So more business there are not in favor. And so it just, it's sad that, you know, it comes up now, and I'm being there, I know I'm new to the council, been there for almost two years now, I never heard of a parking issue. Yeah, I seen it before, I seen people come in, you know, from other cities, parking there. I seen it before, but I do drive by there every morning, I do see parking spots. And I would just suggest, if they believe people from other cities are taking our spots, maybe, I believe someone said it, lifting the residency parking requirement to a later hour, so we can prevent that, because if they, we just extend it for two hours, that person that works the nine-to-five technically can't park there. And again, talking about nine-to-five, not everyone works the nine-to-five schedule, so it's very tough for them to find parking. So I'm not in favor for this, and because, you know, we're just pushing the issue, Chelsea does have a parking issue, which I think needs to be resolved in a different way. And putting two hours there mainly just not a solution, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Vito.
I want to thank everybody who took the time to write a letter, to send an email, to show up and speak. I think it's just beautiful to see people coming together. I wish I'd see this amount of people in the audience on a regular council meeting, but it's not usually this exciting. So thank you, everybody, for, for coming. I find it very telling that the majority of people who are in opposition to this live in other districts. And I wonder, how would people feel if the shoe were on the other foot and somebody from another district tried to impose restrictions on where you work, live, and play? I think, I lived in the Carey Square area, at one eighty-five Washington, and at ten Foytai Street at Carter Heights, for an entire decade before I moved to this side of town where parking is even worse, but let's not even go there. We talk about supporting business, supporting business. I took the time as an at-large counselor to speak to all the businesses in that area. And I can tell you that the Carey Square Club, The Salon, Kelsey's, Santiago's Barbershop, Washington Street Market, and the Broadway Dance Studio is opposed to this initiative. So if we're talking about small businesses, what small businesses are we talking about? The ones owned by city councilors? Because if that's the case, I feel very uncomfortable with that. The last thing I want to say. I don't like the concept of putting business before residents, but I understand that we need to support our small businesses. That's not what this is about, not at all. I actually, I've been to Pangi Cafe, I think it's awesome, I think it's a great space, the ambiance is amazing, it's a protest cafe, I'm an activist by heart, it's beautiful, I love it. But unfortunately, I just think that this isn't the solution. Putting further restrictions on a community that's already impacted by parking across the city is not the way that we're going to solve this, and we need to really stop and look at the broader issue and figure out how we as a community are really going to talk about parking in a real way where we're going to provide solutions, and not further impact the residents that live in that area, or the small businesses that are going to be impacted. At Broadway Dance Studio, they have classes that last two, three hours, parents going in and out. I don't know if anybody is familiar with the culture of Santiago's Barbershop, but sometimes you wait three to four hours for a haircut. If you're waiting three to four hours for a haircut, yeah, I spoke with the owner. If they're, if they're waiting three to four hours for a haircut, two, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm getting distracted. And that means that while you're in the chair, you possibly have to run out, and it's not a matter of putting money in the meter, it's a matter of going to completely move your vehicle from that area, because the parking people here are brutal. I, the other thing that concerns me is the fact that the people that are coming to support a Pangi Cafe, this isn't about Pangi Cafe. I thought this was a conversation, a real conversation about small businesses and supporting them. I don't understand why we're singling out one, one, one person, one, one business. That, to me, is just, look, I'm voting against this because I did my homework, and I spoke with residents in that area. The other thing that we're ignoring is the fact that this area, this commercial business area, is probably the most densest residential area out of all the squares in the city when you have Carter Heights, fourteen Bloomingdale, and one eighty-three and one eighty-five Washington Street. We're talking about a potential of over six hundred families in this small area, and where, I can't believe that we're sitting here talking about eight parking spots, and that this has become like what it is, it's, it's actually kind of disappointing. But the sec, so that's where I stand, I'm voting against it, because I'm siding with the people, and I'm supporting the small businesses in that area that are not owned by city councilors. The second part I want to speak about, and my advisors are going to be upset with me, but is this issue of ethics. And we can sit here and we can pretend, but the fact of the matter is, the fact that nobody has batted an eye or called it out is actually very disturbing. The fact that someone who owns a business in the city can go forth and put an issue and rally on social media, let me explain something to the public so the public understands. About a month ago, we had a subcommittee meeting with our city solicitor, where they were talking to us about the law. And we were told that in, on social media, we were not allowed to speak on issues that were pending or coming before us in city council, because it would be.
One minute, counselor.
I'm getting timed?
Yeah, you're getting timed.
Because it would be unethical. So I respect this office, I respect the constituents that put me here, I respect everyone's opinion. And my thing is, I hold myself to that standard, I respect those limitations, and I use social media as a way to engage and reflect and speak and get, get input. I respect those limitations, and I hold myself to that standard, and I'm asking our law department, our city solicitor, our administration, to hold that same standard for every single counselor that's up here. It is actually very disturbing that I even have to bring this up, but it's a problem, and I'm not singling any one person out. My point is this, my point is that if I hold you accountable and you hold me accountable, we're lifting each other up and lifting this community up to talk about real issues, and we can flourish together. That's all I have to say, I'm just, you know, I, I, I get very passionate about this, because I ran, because I know that this is the reason why people are so disengaged from local politics, because they don't trust. I'm just asking for us to do the right thing and be transparent, and I urge my colleagues to vote against this, because not only does it smell, and it's walking murky waters by the way that it was proposed and handled, and social media, and, and alternative facts through emails, but it's just.
Time, counselor.
Not what the residents or small businesses want, thank you for.
How do you follow that? You're doing fast. So I'm, my area's soldier's home, so I border this. One effect, you know what, I applaud the attempt to try and find a solution for the parking scenario. I definitely do. But as Jemir pointed out, the timing is wrong. I, I think that's the problem. There's a lot of projects going on in Chelsea. Try to go from, we all know, I'm not saying try to go, you know it yourself, try to go from one side, one, one corner of Chelsea to the other. It's not like in the old days, right? Takes a lot longer. There's a lot of projects that are going on in the city that are creating lacks of parking spaces. There's a lot of constructions, and I'm sure you've all seen a whole bunch of dumpsters in every street, you know, people buying buildings, all this stuff. So I think it's, I think, you know, while I applaud the attempt, of course, to try and, you know, that's what we do as counselors, right? We see a, a problem or a problem is brought up to us, and we try to create a solution. And I think the timing is what's, what's amiss here, because if, if, if the, my former high school wasn't under total reconstruction, you wouldn't have the challenges of parking that you have on Gardner and on Park, which is spilling out into these areas, and it's probably one of the reasons, I've lived on Washington Ave for fifteen years, we've all lived on Washington Ave at some point, we know it's a challenging street to park in, right? But I think right now, at this moment, what we're finding is we're finding a spillage, a spillover, as he mentioned, from the construction that's going on into the Carey Square area. And I think that once construction is done, you know, we'll still have a parking problem, right? We just do, we're Chelsea, we're growing, so we're going to have a parking problem. I don't really have a problem with the, with the request, I think I have a problem with the number of parking spaces. You know, one thing I appreciate about Shirtlift Street is that it's one side metered and one side not metered. And I'm wondering if maybe, if the requests have been made for one side, four spaces, just to see, you know, how it works out. Eight spaces seems like, you know, it just seems like a bit, a bit much, but, you know, what do I know? I'm not part of Parking Commission, you know, I'm just a resident. So, you know, I think it's a timing thing for me, you know, it's definitely worthwhile effort to try it out, especially where it's a temporary thing, it's only until August, right? But again, you know, thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on the matter? Counsel Cortell.
This was up two weeks ago and was tabled, I was prepared to vote on it two weeks ago. I was given two weeks to look into it further. I did pose the question, what anybody would know in two weeks that they didn't know two weeks ago. But with that said, I looked into it, and I spoke to some residents, I also spoke to other people in the area, there's obviously people out of the area who both have an opinion both ways. I started with this, with a simple question. First of all, I want people to understand, I, I just lost in this whole thing, I want to be, I want everybody really clear what we're voting on, okay? It's two-hour parking, not metered, there are signs that say two-hour parking, they're being enforced between eight o'clock and six o'clock, which means someone can park their car at eight o'clock and doesn't have to move it till ten, and they can park their car at three o'clock and don't have to move it at all. It's eight spaces out of entire square, and it's temporary, on a trial basis. So the word compromise came up, and I think the city, I think the Parking and Traffic Commission got it right. They did, they did compromise, they did it on a temporary basis, it's a trial basis, they had a study. One of my first questions I asked in the two-week period where I had some extra time was, how well were the three meetings of the Parking Commission attended? A lot of times, they're not attended well. This particular matter, they were attended well, this, this city council is attended well, is, in addition, I appreciate that, I appreciate it, I love to see people out there interested and involved in making decisions tough for us. I will tell you what is unconventional. In the whole time I've been a city counselor, I don't remember anything ever being taken out that was advised by the Traffic and Parking Commission in the seven or so years I've been a city councilor, with the exception of the entire parking plan, which went back and forth a couple of times. So it's, 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 it is uncommon for a city council to take something out. We have the authority to do it, but generally, they just, they pass, based on the fact that traffic and parking considered it, they were considered in well-attended meetings, this particular one, and they chose a compromise. I'm in favor of that compromise, I would like to see them do it, it's temporary, they'll revisit it in August, they had a parking study. And I posed this question to one or two people that I spoke to, and I'll say it again, I started at this point, and I will end at this point. Where in Chelsea, in a business, in its, in an area that's zoned business or commercial, can you park without feeding a meter and stay there as long as you want? Name it. Name the other named square, all throughout Chelsea, where you ca, where you can park forever, for as long as you want. Not Washington, which was changed over to, to commercial at the same time as this particular square. The reason for these spaces are so there's some transient spaces, and there's some movement. It's not necessarily for people who are parking and, and taking their bus, a bus in, which is its own problem, that we did not deal with during the parking program, but it's for someone like me. I've been to Kelsey's twice in my life, once when I first moved here, and once during a snowstorm when it was closed, when, when it was open, and I walked down there with some friends. I've never been to the Wing Place, I've never been to Plaza Mexico, and the rationale is that it's, it's, it just, it's too hard. If you are going to take a loop.
One minute, counselor.
That is on the other side of the city, I got it, that's on the other side of the city, you'd like to think you're able to park somewhere. I go out of my way, and I've gone out of my way since I've been a resident of Chelsea to support Chelsea businesses. My dry cleaner has closed twice. I don't know how many city councils have been up here and have supported a resident or a share, a stakeholder, a stock, a stakeholder who owns a business in getting parking in front of their business for fifteen minutes or two hours or something limited. I have done that on a number of occasions, other counselors have, in fact, on the very same agenda that this was pulled off of, two counselors did the very same thing. Incidentally, neither of them were here at the meeting, and neither of them spoke on it, but it just, it passed, straight through. This has become way, way, way too political, it's crazy that this has been this political as compared to some of the things we've done, like tiffs. I will end it where I started. Any place in Chelsea where you attempt to try to have businesses successful that does not have some limitation on parking, anywhere in Somerville, Boston, anywhere else, you expect to pay a meter, you expect to have to move your car, this should be no different, we have to support our businesses here, and I'm in favor of this. It is a modest amount, it is temporary, and it's a study.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Matt Frank. You have the floor.
I'd like to start off by thanking everybody for coming up, I know it's difficult to take time out of your day. And since you guys came up, and we listened to you guys for a bit, people up here know I like to talk, so you're going to listen to me for a little bit. I do want to thank the ninety percent of you that came up, there are ten percent that came up, that came up with an obvious political axe, that I've seen come up several times with the same particular counselor and with other people. And my advice is to put the axe away, we're all too old for this. There's two people in particular who seem to continuously come up and attack one particular person. I like both of you, you're both great guys, but there's something going on here, there's too much politics, as my colleague said, flying in the air every time that particular council's name comes up. Some people seem to kind of get into a frenzy. Like I said, we're kind of past that point in Chelsea where we want to jump into this, you know, attacking people with axe thing. I'd say the same thing about a colleague that's sitting up here with me as well, it's not really kosher to attack someone who's not sitting in the room to defend themselves. So I know it's kind of awkward for me to attack somebody for attacking somebody, but that's one of the reasons why we have that rule where if I say the council's name, the council can get up and defend themselves. The counselor is not sitting there, and there was a two-minute tirade against him by one of my colleagues. When there's official channels, there's the Ethics Commission, there is a legal counsel, and there are multiple different ways to get that point across. To do it in front of an audience, in front of the newspaper, in front of a camera, during political season, when he's not sitting there, I don't think that's cool, and I apologize for calling you out for doing that, but that's the way it is. To get, thank you.
To the chair, counselor.
So to get back to my point, so one of my day jobs is dealing with small businesses, not in Chelsea but in other areas. I've dealt with over a thousand small businesses, and I can tell you, if you don't have access to your customers, you wither and die, or you become desperate and you start doing things that people don't want. We had a restaurant in that area that went the desperate route. They said, hey, you know, we can't get customers the normal way, we're going to go some other way. And it went downhill, and it attempted to drag the neighborhood down with it. There was also a business in that same neighborhood that went the other route. I, I liked them, they were great guys, but they couldn't quite get people into their storefronts. So they, you know, they kind of gave up, as one of the people said, and they're in Hawaii now, so they're doing well, but they were replaced by a business that's now attempting to drag people in. Customers need to get to the businesses, they're not going to walk two blocks. Like I said, I've dealt with over a thousand businesses, currently, that's what I do every day, I'm trying to drag businesses up that are falling down as we speak, and one of the biggest factors that they tell me is my customers tell me I can't get to them, I can't get to you, I don't know where else I can park, they don't know the neighborhoods like residents and other people might. So I understand it's difficult for residents to find parking, I, I sympathize, I empathize, but we all also want to have nice businesses here. We used to have, that used to be a very vibrant square, I've seen the pictures of Spa the Spa, I've seen the pictures of that place really being hopping. And unfortunately, I think we kind of got used to that mindset, that there would only be one person in that coffee shop at any given time, instead of maybe twenty people. That kind of happens, I feel that in my same.
That kind of happens, I feel that in my same neighborhood whenever, you know, a building that was empty is now not empty. The residents got used to the status quo of that building being empty. When you go to fill it, there's a sudden shock because for 20 years, that business was empty and now you're filling it with something. I did hear people mention Katz Bagels. There are two 10-minute parking spots right next to Katz Bagels. So, that's actually a good example of a hard parking situation and people-
Hello.
Oh, thank you. And people chose to find a way around that by creating 10-minute spots. There's situations like that in other parts of the city. There's situations like that in other parts of the state. I know maybe eight parking spots is too much. Maybe it's not enough. There were actually three meetings about it, and I, I do give people that are here credit. Some of you were here. Quite a few of the people here and quite a few of the councils weren't here to say, hey, maybe there should be five. Maybe there should be four. I, I get to pick either eight or nothing. I don't believe I have the option of saying four. You know, maybe that's something that I would investigate if I had that ability to do so. So, that's my biggest concern is that we can get customers into these businesses. These businesses can serve the residents, and we can take those political axes that we saw flying around this evening, bury those in the ground. It's not good for Chelsea for that to be happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Enio, Mr. Lopez.
I read a little piece of a letter of somebody who sent to the city council that said, if it is not broken, why fix it? And then, that's all I want to say. And then, my colleague said there are two council to pass something like this in our area, but it was, and then they, he was saying that I wasn't here. I wasn't here because I had a reason. Why not be here? And to attack me in that way, I feel attacked. But you guys, and that is not appropriate. I wasn't here that day because I had a family-
To the Chair, to the Chair, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm gonna move for roll call. Clerk will clarify the vote.
If you vote yes, you are adopting the two-hour parking. If you vote no, you're denying it. Counselor Vito?
No.
Counsel, he recused himself. Counselor Tahara?
No.
Counselor Rodriguez?
No.
Counselor Recupro absent. Counselor Cortell?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy absent. Counselor Lopez? Counselor Robinson?
No.
Counselor Frank?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia absent. Two in favor, one, two, three, four, five opposed. Motion is defeated. We have under second readings introduced by the city manager. B. Privada, HHS Recreation and Cultural Affairs Division for one-year term. Jose Araueta, 73 Essex Street, three-year term. Yau Nuwa, 60 Prescott Ave, two-year term. Caroline J. Burritt, 107 Shertliff Street, one-year term. And Christine M. Smith, Sutherland 10 Metford Street for a one-year term on the appointments to the Community Preservation Committee.
Can I entertain a motion? Counselor Tahara moves roll call to adopt. Have the clerk call a roll.
Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda? Absent. Counselor Tahara?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Recupro absent. Counselor Cortell?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy absent. Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Frank?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia absent. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven in favor, four absent. Motion adopted.
Well, it's a new business.
New business. Order introduced by Counselor Robinson. Audit that the Subcommittee on Conference rescheduled with the Downtown Coordinator to update the city council on the Broadway project.
Counselor Tahara moves to accept and fa-
Adopt under suspension.
Adopt under suspension, move to conference.
Audit introduced by Counselor Lopez. Audit that the city manager instruct Chelsea Police and DPW will install a security camera at the far end of Marvel Street.
Chair recognizes Counselor Lopez. Adopt unanimously under suspension.
You want to talk?
You want to talk under motion? You have the floor, Counselor.
Yes, I've been getting complaints at the end of, far end of Marvel Street where there's people dumping trash in the corner there and people flying down on Marvel Street. So, I would love to see if the city managers instruct DPW and Chelsea Police to install a camera there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order of business.
I have two from Counselor Recupro, but they're not signed.
Oh, we'll hold them over to the next meeting.
And the final order is an order introduced by Counselor Robinson. It's received late. Any objections?
Any objections to the late communication?
Subcommittee on Conference rescheduled with the senior planner project manager for reimaging Broadway relating to transportation and infrastructure of the downtown area.
Yep, move it to conference.
Let's go to conference, yeah.
Go on to conference, thank you.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Any public announcements? Okay.
I would like to say thank you to city manager to help us yesterday with the Guatemalan community that were here Saturday and Sunday. We helped almost 400 people and there was more than 600 that came. And thank you, Mr. Ambrosino, and thank you to the Mali, Harry Wilson, Mr. Cabrera, and so many other people who helped me in these two days. And Leo Robinson, Counselor Robinson, too. Thank you for all your help.
You have an announcement? Well, you have the floor.
All right, I just, I wanted to thank Enio for putting together the Guatemalan consulate that came over this past weekend. It was a huge turnout. Also, I wanted to thank Roseanne Bonjovani. The last few days, I've really seen the best of Chelsea. I saw, they were, we were one of the potential recipients of a $25,000 grant. And so, there was a tour that was done throughout the city. We gathered here. We had community leaders come and speak. We went out throughout the city to different nonprofits. We had counselors share stories and people sharing their different experiences, and it really was really nice. And it just kind of reminds you of all the good things of Chelsea. You know, sometimes things get ugly and we sit here and we fight over parking, but there are a lot of beautiful things that happen in this community. And I just wanted to send a special shout-out to anybody, MGH and Green Roots for putting that together, and the city manager who worked very hard up and down that whole day on a very tight schedule. And also seeing all the people that were here over the weekend. I understand that the city manager and our council president came and let the community know that they're in a safe place, that we are welcoming community and that we support them. And as someone who represents these people who often feel like they're in the shadows, I can't explain how important it is for us to hear that message from the administration. So, thank you, Ms. Ambrosino. Thank you, Enio, for your hard work. Mr. Cabrera, who's over here, thank you for putting it together. That's it.
If I may ask for everybody to rise for a moment of silence for a longtime friend and Chelsea resident, Amando Martinello, who passed away this week. Seeing no further business before this council, we are adjourned.